Mr. Henry.
Here.
Mr. Savili.
Yeah.
Mr. Kozinski.
Here.
Mr. Foley.
Here.
Mr. Corrigan.
Here.
Mr. Bella.
Here.
Alrighty, we have any holdovers or no holdover applications, is that right Carl? I think we're good, okay. Okay, the first application we'll hear tonight is 2217 Daniel Gonzalez at 128 Basset Street.
Mr. Chairman, before you start the application, I'd just like to put on the record that I did receive a 200-foot notice. My property is on the next street, but I did receive a notice that I'm within 200 feet of this applicant. I'm not involved with the application, no opinion either way. So if the board is not comfortable with that, I can step down, but I have no issues. So I can sit here, answer questions if anything comes up.
I think that'd be appropriate, that you stay up here.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I don't see any issues with that. Good evening, Mr. Gonzalez. Before we start, I need you to swear an answer, please raise your right hand. You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I just gotta speak up to the microphone to pick up and just give us your name and your last name.
Danny Gonzalez, G-O-N-Z-A-L-E-Z.
Thank you, and just, you know, just informally explain to the board what you're doing at your house while you're here for approvals tonight.
This is my first time, I've never done this before, so excuse my owns and uds. But basically what I want to do is, I want to bump out the garage that I have. It's gonna be approximately three feet by 19. And I also wanted to add a portico to the entrance of my house, which would be seven by 11.
Mr. Chairman, the application needs two variances. The portico will be somewhat in the front yard setback. The front yard setback is supposed to be 20 feet. And the front edge of the portico, we'll put it at 15, so that's a variance. And same thing with the front edge of the garage, it's supposed to be 20 feet, the front of the garage will be 19. Need for this application.
Alright, thank you. Could you explain why you're bumping out the garage?
I mean, if you see cars these days, they're bigger than what they used to be. In my garage, I had a smaller pickup truck that can fit, I had from the wall to the front, okay. But I have a disabled daughter with equipment, carriage, wheelchair, let's say. So I upgraded to an F-150, a bigger truck, and it doesn't fit anymore. And, you know, we're all familiar with the winters that we've had and the extreme heat that we had. It's just easier to load her and her equipment from the inside of the house than to have to struggle in the driveway after a bit slip on ice or or snow or anything like that.
Thank you. Any questions from the board at all? Any questions? Okay, we'll open up to the public, anybody from the public wish to come in on this application? Make a motion to close it to the public?
I'm moved.
Your second? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Members, what would you like to do with this application at this time?
I'd like to make the motion, we approve the application as read.
John, roll call please.
Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Savili. Mr. Kozinski.
Yes.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan. Mr. Bella.
Yes.
I appreciate your help. He sat down and went point by point and helped me with all this, and I really appreciated it.
We'll memorialize it at the next meeting and then you'll be able to get your permits. Alright, the next application is 2218 Jeff Pawlowski, Forecliff Avenue.
Evening, Mr. Pawlowski, just like the last one, please raise your hand, I'll square in. You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And give us your name, spell your last name.
Jeffrey Pawlowski, last name is P-A-W-L-O-W-S-K-I.
Thank you, and just again, explain to the board what you're doing at your home and why you're here this evening.
Yes, what I'd like to do is construct a detached garage on my property.
And give a little more detail with the size, what's going on?
Okay, no problem at all. The size is gonna be 30 foot by 48 foot. We're gonna use it to house my classic car motorcycle collection, which I've accumulated over the years.
Okay, so you have lifts in there as well?
Well, the idea is to have the lift so I could put a car underneath the car, not to do mechanical work for storage only.
Right, okay. Will it be heated in that garage?
Of course.
Okay, because I saw that we had a bathroom that was in the corner there.
When you're in your 60s, the bathroom is handy to have there, so. And besides, my Polish wife would kill me if I got the bathroom dirty up too much, so.
So you wouldn't be using this for any kind of commercial use at all?
Absolutely not.
Alright, so is this for your classic cars, no business use or anything like that?
No, not at all, I have a business property in Old Bridge, I have more than enough going on there, I don't need anything else.
Any other questions from the members here?
Mr. Chairman, just to put on the record, the variances, because the garage is detached from the house, it's an accessory structure. You earn its only allowance 150 square foot, which is kind of small, this is 1,440 square feet. And then the height maximum for a garage is 15 feet, this will be at 16 feet. And those are the only two variances required.
Are you gonna keep your existing garage, is that part of the house?
Oh yes, that's my wife's storage shed.
What is behind the garage in terms of property, proposed garage?
Nothing, just open space.
It's not gonna affect any residents?
Not to my understanding.
Any other questions from the members?
Is there a height issue, I think?
Yeah, the maximum is 15, this is 16.
John, do you see any issues at all?
No, I think as long as, you know, we've heard the testimony about this and the purpose behind them. Raise an eyebrow just to make sure that there's no business use operating.
Try yourself, do you have anything?
I was sure, actually, the construction is actually being constructed into a hill, is basically, there's a slope area behind the property. So it's being built into that hill, so I think the 16-foot variance is near the existing driveway. And it kind of tapers off toward the back of the building, so it's just a small area that exceeds that 15-foot requirement.
I just got one question, Jeff. The list, do you know what kind you're gonna use, the two-post or the four?
I'm not sure yet, but let me tell you, I, you know, I planned this for 60-some years, so they're gonna be the best ones.
Well, the four-post are for storage.
Right.
Two-post are for working on, that's why.
I watch, you watch YouTube and you see Hoovy's Garage and all the rest of them, they have them carted, that's what we're gonna have.
I have a four-post.
Oh, okay.
General question.
Just for the record, will you be renting any space at all on this garage?
No, not at all.
And that'll be a stipulation of?
Of course.
Any other questions from the members?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, just to answer Mr. Savili's question, the architectural plans show four posts, so.
There's no other questions, I'd like to open up to the public, anybody from the public wish to comment on this application?
You gotta come to the microphone, sir. I need to swear in, just like I did with him, so please raise your right hand, swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And give us your name, spell your last name.
Jason Bowen, Jason is B as in boy, O-L-A-N.
Thank you, please continue.
Hey Jeff, I'm just curious of the orientation of the garage, because the plans I saw online were cut off. So I don't know which way the days are gonna be, because I'm just curious of that, that's all. Okay, that was my only question, okay, thank you.
Any other members from the public wish to comment? So you know other members that would like to comment, I would like to close the public portion.
I'm moved.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there any other questions you would have for Jeff and us? Okay, what would you like to do with this application this time?
Mr. Chairman, I move the application to be approved.
John, roll call please.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Savili.
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski.
Yes.
Mr. Foley. Mr. Corrigan. I just need to. Hello, Councilman. Hi, I'm gonna put you on speaker, okay? You're welcome.
Is that Christian?
I am.
Good evening. Oh, no problem.
Hey, Christian, just as an update, we just approved two applications, we have one more to go. BK, was it? Was it? BKD application on Route 35? Just as an update.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Bella.
Yes.
Your application was approved and will adopt the resolution next month when we can build in permits.
Thank you very much, good evening, gentlemen.
Yeah, yeah, well worth it.
Okay, the last application is, what is that, the BKD?
Well, that's what we're calling it, it's application number 22-15, Nicola Pengway, it was originally the BKD approach for 1979 Route 35 South, they were here for final site plan. And for a sign variance, as the board may recall, we've heard this application twice already. Originally, just was the use variance to turn what's known as the old Icon Lounge property into a residential subdivision. The following application, after that was for preliminary site plan. Tonight is really final site plan, which is rather abbreviated, we've pretty much worked out all the issues. There's a few items raised in the professionals' report, it's more or less confirming that everything that was in the preliminaries in the final. And in addition, again, taking Mr. Pape's job away from, sorry Ken, they do need a variance for their proposed sign. So just to put it in context for everybody, so. Mr. Pape, as the applicant's attorney, you wanna take your job back from me?
No, thank you. Mr. Chairman, board members, board professionals, public, good evening, all, Kenneth Pape of the firm Hileburn Pape. On behalf of the applicant, this application came before the board as a use variance in June of 2019. And it came back before the board as a preliminary site plan in October of 2020. The applicant was BKDLLC. BKDLLC owned the property at the time, and they were the family that had operated the nightclubs from this property for the past 30-some years. BKD was Betty Costa and Dimitri, those were the Rexinus family members. And we advised the board that they were not developers or builders, they were seeking approvals. We advised the board that we would not seek final approval until a bona fide builder developer had taken possession of the property. And I'm very pleased to tell you that someone who's very near and dear to our office, someone that we've represented for over 40 years, Mr. Pengway, who sits behind me, is the builder developer, has purchased it, and we're here tonight on his behalf, seeking final site plan approval. The final site plan approval is the same site plan that was presented to a preliminary. We haven't changed anything other than to enhance the landscaping and modify the lighting to be consistent with the commitments that were made. Peter has been working with the board professionals, Peter Strong has been working with board professionals on resolution compliance. We're not 100% there, we're getting very close to resolution compliance. Peters Fromm also was responsible for securing all the outside agency approvals. As we're on state highway, we have DEP regulated properties. We have all the approvals except for one, the last one is the treatment works approval for the sewer line. And the, we are, we've hired as an engineer to do the final design of the pump. We've actually had meetings as recently as this past week with Jay and his team. We're very close to being finished with that pump design, and then we'll make the application for TWA treatment works approval with the state. All other approvals are in place. One other thing that happened when we were in front of the board at preliminary approval. Board asked that we add to the architectural plans outdoor living space for every one of the units. You were looking that we were forced to have elevated decks attached to the building. We have colored renderings to show that elevated decks on every one of the units, except for the ones that had their own ground level patio. Every one of the, that has now has an outdoor space. And we also indicated that we had no sign. We told the board, we didn't want to ask for a sign, we knew that whoever was the developer would have a sign requirement. So we would wait till final and present the sign to you. We have a sign that we'll present to you this evening. We're going to ask this board for a variance for the location of the sign. We're in a business zone, B3 zone, permitted are tall pylon signs. We don't think that would be attractive for a residential community. We'd like to do a monument sign, one that's down on the ground, landscape. The maximum height of one pylon is six feet, the other is eight, and across the entire face, it's about 13 feet. In the middle, there's a sign of about four by eight feet. It's a monument on the ground. In order for a monument on the ground to be seen from Route 35, we've got to be closer to the highway than the ordinance permits. You know our property drops off. If we went 25 feet back and did a monument, you would see the top of the monument as you went by. We're going to ask permission to set that monument 13 feet off of the highway. We're going to ask permission to have a monument style sign instead of a pylon sign. That is, there's one variance that's associated with that. And as that is our outline, Mr. Chair and Board members, we could have Mr. Strong sworn, his testimony this evening is both as an engineer and a planner. So ask that he place those credentials on the record, and I'll be very grateful in presenting this limited revision to the board. Excited and acceptable procedure, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Strong, if you could.
There you go. Good evening, Mr. Strong. Swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please give us your name, spell your last name for the record?
Peter W. Strong, S-T-R-O-N-G, with Crest Engineering at 100 Reich Drive in Millstone, New Jersey.
And Mr. Strong, if you would take just a few moments to share with the board your professional background as both a professional engineer and a professional plan.
You presented in front of our board before, eh? Yes, I have. You're accepted.
Just to clarify for the record, you're, both your licenses are still in effect?
They are.
Okay, so yes, again, no offense, just want to make it clear on the record.
I'm still a licensed professional engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Strong, we'll accept your qualification.
Mr. Strong, I'm gonna do this in a very succinct manner. I made statements that the plan is the same plan, there's no revisions other than enhanced landscaping, and you've modified the lighting to be consistent with what we had promised.
That's correct.
Number of units, placement of units, height of units, parking arrangement, circulation, grading, all the way it was shown at the time of preliminary approval.
It is.
And we're looking at a schematic, a colored rendering schematic of the plan that was presented to the board, both use variance and preliminary site plan.
Yes, as a matter of fact, this is, this is the plan that I presented to the board as Exhibit A2 on September 23rd, 2020, for the original approval of the site plan for this project, and it is the same.
I indicated to the board that there is a sign and a sign location. If, do you have for the boards, could you show them the monument style sign that Mr. Pengway proposes to install on the site?
Yes, the, first I'll show you where the sign is located, it is in this area here, just to the south of the entrance driveway off of Route 35. This is south, that's north. And it is 13 feet off of the highway right-of-way line, as, I do.
Mr. Strong, I apologize, before we go to the next rendering, has that been changed since we saw it previously, the exhibit you're using now?
It has not.
Okay, and that was previously marked, what again, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry.
What was it previously marked?
It was, Mark was Exhibit 8-2 on September 23rd, 2020.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Strong, as part of your plan set that was filed with the board, you show a monument style sign. If you could indicate which sheet of the package has the sign.
Yes, this is Sheet 7 of 17 of the final site plan drawings. It's called Landscape Plan Panel A, last revised May 15th, 2020, 2022, sorry. And the sign is located here in the lower middle portion of the, of the drawing. And it shows a sign that is 13 feet from one end to the other, has two stone pylons, pylasters that are six foot four on the one end and eight feet on the other end, and has the four by eight foot sign in the middle with crossways at 35, which is what the, the new owner is gonna be calling this project.
That sign, all of the details of the sign require, do any of the details of the sign require any variance really?
Not to my knowledge, no.
And, but the location?
The location is too close to the right-of-way line, where it should be 25 feet, however, and or 13 feet. As, as you had mentioned before, and as we had previously discussed, we're in the B3 zone, B3 zone generally has higher and higher signs, which are rightfully set further back in the right-of-way line. But because of this residential nature of this community, we felt that a monument sign would be better. And in order to be able to see the sign as you're approaching the project from the north, to see the sign on the south and get into the entrance drive, we wanted to move the sign a little closer so that people who wouldn't miss the driveway and end up having to go back down and turn around and come back again. So that's the, that's the reason for that.
If it's not inappropriate, the summary is, this sign is offered as an aesthetically more compatible sign than a pylon sign. And its location is offered so that it is, can be seen from the traveling public, and that is a safety.
Safety issue, that's right, yes, absolutely.
Mr. Strong isn't the architect, but there are colored renderings that he has, that the architect provided to us. And I would like to offer those to you, we've submitted them, but I'd like to offer them, just to confirm that all of the outdoor living space areas have been added to the facades. Could we go to those sheets?
Yeah, did you want to label this as an exhibit of any sort?
Of this, no, we don't have a colored rendering of the sign.
Mr. Strong, to answer your question, that's not been changed from what was submitted, correct?
Not been changed from what was submitted, no.
Then, no, then your identification as a sheet of 7 of 17 is sufficient, again, you know, not been colorized or changed, we just need the title block and sheet number.
Materials that are on the building, materials that are on the sign are intended to be identical. So the stone that is shown on this building and the colors that are funston are the colors that are intended to be on that sign. Apologize for not having that separate.
Yes, we have two colored exhibits of the, the building.
And I don't believe, I don't believe those were marked previously. So why don't we mark those as A1 and A2 with tonight's date?
And these are colored renderings of the architectural plans that were submitted. They, the purpose of these renderings, one is to identify that we're consistent with that, which we made a commitment to when we were here the last time. And also to show that every one of the units has an outdoor deck, except for those that have a ground level patio. On the, on the rendering, there is here. Peter.
Yes. I got one, what are yours?
You can see the railings that are on each of the unit that are around the, the deck.
What's the measurement?
The decks are.
10 by 15, Mr. Pengway tells me. 150 square feet, 10 by 15s. And you can see on the back the same thing.
This is the front view, this is the rear of the building.
A2.
Yes, thank you, A2 with tonight's date.
Mr. Strong, October 26.
Sort of the decks on the front of the building or the back of the building, or both?
Both, well, there's little, little balconies, but there's also a, a living area deck that goes with each unit. So the units that are on the ground, have ground floor access, would have patios, and the upper floors would have decks.
So does each unit have one in the front and one in the back?
Not every unit has. Every unit has a 15 by 10 deck. The, the smaller patios around the sliding doors, those are where they architecturally fit.
Yeah, the.
That's correct.
And then, and these.
These are little balconies.
These are balconies.
No.
Deck is in the back.
No. Peter, the deck's in the back.
So to clarify, A1 shows the back of the building with the decks, and A2 shows the front with the balconies? Or I got it backwards?
Excellent, in the back.
Okay, so A2 shows the decks, thank you.
And, Mr. Strong, would it be accurate to say that some of these units are stacked such that some units are above units that are below? So they have either a ground floor patio or an upper floor deck?
That's correct.
Thank you, yes. Some do, not all. That was in static picture.
Yes. Yes.
I'm looking at my, it's still 44 units, it's still, thank you, Mr. Barry, 22 are stacked townhouse design, 22 are traditional townhouse design. They're all two bedrooms, there's a commitment that was memorialized in the resolution that there has to be a restrictive covenant that confirms that. I drafted it, I think that your attorney's gonna make it better than the one that I drafted. But I, there's a restrictive covenant that we're ready to file.
Yeah, actually, let's just talk about it real quickly, Mr. Pape, so the, the, as Mr. Pape indicated, the original applicant is, is different than here. So originally was proposed to be a condominium, to be, you know, set up as a condominium, and which requires what's called a master deed to create it. And that there would be a restriction in the master deed that no unit would contain more than two bedrooms. That was a concern of the board at the time of the use variance and preliminary site plan. So that's what the language in the resolution says, it says restriction in the master deed. What has been proposed, I don't know if they're not considering doing a condominium of the property, which is certainly fine. So what's been proposed instead, and we need the board to kind of approve it so I can put it in the resolution, is that instead of it being in the master deed, we'll just get a deed restriction, like we have deed restrictions for different things on properties. So if we put the deed restriction on and we decide to make a condominiums in the future, the deed restriction stays. If they decide not to make a condominiums, the deed restriction's there, that limits it to 44 units and two bedrooms per unit. So I think the net result is the board's concern that there be something recorded in the property records to confirm 44 units, no more than two bedrooms, will be satisfied by the restrictive covenant, as opposed to the original language, which was restriction in the master deed. So I think the net result is the same, it's just a different vehicle to get there. So that'll be part of the, you know, the, the motion tonight, if the board rules favorably, would be to include that change and document it in the resolution. So a lot of verbiage there, but again, I think at the end of the day, it's, it's the same net result and the, and the protection and the notice to the world the board wanted will be effectuated. Thank you, Mr. Pape.
And is, and is it gonna be set up as a company, or is it gonna be individual use of the association?
Mr. Pengway has not made a decision as to whether they'll be individual, whether he'll retain it. He owns apartment complexes and he builds townhouses and condominiums around the state. This will be, and restricting the form of ownership is something that can't be part of an application.
So it's not, it's not gonna be owner, it might be owner, or it might be rent?
And it might be, or it could be a combination, you know, he could build it and keep some and sell some.
Um, no, as Mr. Pape alluded to, the law in New Jersey says we can't address the form of ownership, and the form of ownership is not an implication for the board. So it's really, the board needs to look at the number of units, the number of bedrooms, those things. So if the applicant decides to make it condominium, they can do that, if they decide to make it apartments, they can do that. If they decide, because it's under, I think it's under the, the requirement for DCA that you have to condominium, you can do what's called reciprocal deeds. So there's a bunch of different ways they could set up, but the bottom line is, the board can't make a certain form of ownership as a condition of approval, or likewise, the board can't deny it because it's one form of ownership versus a different.
That's not our issue, our issue is how it's built, if the land is huge.
Right, the, the board, the board's issue is not whether it's apartments or single-family standalone houses or condos. It's the board, as, as we know. Right, because we can't. Right, because we can't discriminate against the form of ownership is what the case law says.
Yeah, there's, there's a whole body of constitutional law. So what you just said, what you just said, I can't ever say. There you go.
Oh, way to backtrack.
There's no restriction on ownership by, by, by constitutional law. And that, Mr. Chair and Board Members, that is your applicant's presentation. This is a request for final site plan approval and that variance for the design that has been offered. For Mr. Strong, Mr. Penguin and I are available for questions from the board or the board's professionals.
With the variant, with the variance for the sign.
Round up lighting.
It won't be internally illuminated or anything of that sort.
Round up onto the sun, Mr. Penguin.
Twenty four hours a day or unlimited?
Yeah, pretty, pretty much you, when you have a sign that identifies a residential community, you don't turn it off.
All right, just want to get it on the record, twenty four hours a day, twenty four hours.
I had a question about the current building. Because it's becoming an eyesore. It's getting tagged up. It's graffiti. Police removed two stolen vehicles out of there Monday. I mean, is there, like, how long before that building, if it's proved, gets knocked down and when is this going to get?
I am working on it. Actually, I'm working on that now.
Mr. Paper, we're going to need Mr. Penguin sworn in if he's.
Mr. Nicholas Penguin.
No, 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 Mr. Penguin, it's fine. We'll just swear in real quick. Peter, you want to give him the microphone?
Yeah, yeah.
Then, then we can feel free, please raise your right hand, sir. You swear for him to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Give us your name, spell your last name.
Nicola, N I C O L I, Penguin, P E N, G U E.
And can just repeat what you said before so we can hear it on the microphone? Demolition.
Indicated that you're, you're working on the demolition.
Yeah, I'm working on a demolition permit now, actually, as we speak. I, I think that I've had some people already inquire about getting the permits and stuff, and I'm trying to take care of some things that are in there, get some stuff out of there. And I'm going to knock it down. It's actually, I'd, I'd knock it down as if Andy gave you a permit tomorrow, I'd probably knock it down next week.
I got the phase one and all the soil testing back about a week ago. I'll get that. I know that you need that.
And I know it looks terrible and I just, I just.
No?
Thank you, Mr. Penguin.
Well, I know there was a couple of requirements that they were working on getting. So as soon as we get those couple of requirements done, we're going to hand them for the permit to knock the building down.
You're saying within six months anyway, that would be down?
I, I'm pretty sure. I'm almost certain.
Okay. Can we get it secured somehow with a fence around it? It's, it's getting tagged up graffiti. It's becoming a problem with dumping stolen cars just this week.
Uh, I, I as far as putting the fence around, well, what I'm going to do actually this week, I have a meeting with the demolition guy. And I'm going to see how far he got. And if he's close to getting, I guess, what the, the zoning wants or they want, if it's close and I could get a permit real quick, I'll get in there, I'll hand in the permit. As soon as I get the permit, I'll knock it down.
Would you like a gate to keep people going in?
That would be good, yeah. A lot of, you know, you see the construction fences around buildings. Locking the, there's only one way in and one way out. If we put a gate up or something. It's, it's emptied out. All the trucks are gone. The only thing that was left behind were the two stolen cars.
Two stolen cars?
One day they took them out.
So you mean put a gate at the entrance so nobody could get in and out?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I could do something like, actually, it's not a bad idea. I think it's a good idea.
Unless you're going to have it knocked down like within six months like the chairman.
Yeah, like I said, I, I really do have a meeting next week with the demolition guy. He had, he had a couple of items. And as soon, I think he's got one of them. He's got to get one more item and then I'll hand him the permit to knock it down. And as soon as I get the permit, we're going to knock it down.
And you put the gate up and sort of keep cars in and out of there?
Temporarily, you want, you want a gate up there?
Yeah, just so people don't go back there, dump cars. I don't want kids hanging down there drinking. It's a.
I'll try to get a gate. The only problem is it's on a highway, so I got to put a weight back so people could pull in, you know? But I, I, I'll, I'll put something.
You work with the zoning officer is saying so it's far enough back so cars and trucks can pull off.
Right.
Open the gate and come in.
Yeah, yeah. So maybe bring it, hold it back thirty feet or forty feet back and you know, close it up. So if anybody needs to get in there, they got a place to park while they open the gate and close the gate. Yeah.
They are already, they are already. Quiet down on the bottom there.
Can't, no one sees you.
But I, I, I will keep Andy informed also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
John, do you have any questions? Or Jay, of the sign, I guess, is there any issues with that only being thirteen feet at all or?
Chairman, no, it's, the sign is located on the downstream side of the southbound side. So it's beyond the entrance. So it's not a site issue. You're not looking toward the sign as you're pulling out, looking to the left. The sign's, the location's on an issue from that standpoint. From an engineering standpoint, as was indicated, when you granted preliminary approval, there were a number of pages of comments that needed to be addressed. It's kind of been whittled down to just one page and some outstanding permits. They're very close to addressing all the prior conditions.
Nothing that's major, you would say?
It's major. There was an issue with designing the pump station as was indicated. We had a meeting last week and, and they're getting very close to that being resolved as well.
John, do you have any questions?
So I, just starting with the sign, I, I think the, the testimony, the, the reasons why they, they feel that this type of sign is appropriate, I, I happen to agree. So no issue there for planning perspective. I had a couple of quick questions from my report. Mr. Strong, could you just confirm, because the architectural plans changed a bit from the preliminary or the preliminary approval, yeah? Can you just confirm that none of the building heights as measured from grade have changed? Those are all the same as what was approved?
To the best of my knowledge, they're all exactly the same as they were.
I, I actually went over with the architect. I'll tell you that I confirmed that there's no change. Every building had a height in the resolution and every building matches that height.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. And then I had, I had a, a comment about the, the temperature of the lights and whether you'd be willing to make them a little softer. Any issue?
Three thousand.
Yeah.
Four thousand. That's fine. We have no problem doing that.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
And then, Mr. Chairman, just, just to reiterate, the, the conditions of approval have been carried through from each resolution. We've already talked about the forty four units and no more than two bedrooms. All wetlands and related buffers will be placed with conservation easement. We'll need to have that submitted so the board professionals can review it. The storm guard management system would be privately owned and maintained. And the road would be privately owned and maintained as well. And I'm assuming once final approval goes through, the last condition was the applicant would request the town to enforce, enforce Title Thirty Nine motor vehicle laws in the proper. So all those will continue through. There's no issues with those conditions.
None at all.
Thank you for confirming, Mr. Pape.
Yeah, there's a list of trash and all, all those commitments that were made and memorialized all come full. No dumpsters, old cans in the garage.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any questions at all from the board? Like to open up to the public, if there's any questions from the public? Make a motion to close it to the public?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What's your desire in this application?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the application be approved.
Don't roll call, please.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Savili?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Corgan?
Yes.
Mr. Emma?
Yes.
Mr. Bell.
Yes. And we didn't mention, Mr. Emma came when the application had just started. So Mr. Emma, there was no other questions on anything you may have missed. You're good. Okay, just want to make sure we have a good record on eligibility for voting.
And we also left off, but I know that your secretary has it. We did, this was a notice here. Finally, you don't usually notice, but because of the variance, we noticed and we delivered all of our notices on the eighteenth to Mr. Chair, Board Members all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, what do we have? One resolution to be memorialized?
Chairman, we have two. Yeah, I was a little late getting the second one in, my apologies. The first resolution was Chase Buscemi. That was at the bend. It's not really a corner technically. Twenty Ridge Avenue, if you may recall, they had to redo their survey for the, for the retaining wall and fence, which the board ended up granting. And as you may recall, Jay was kind enough to work with the applicant to locate the final fence to make sure it didn't, one, encroach into the setback and two, didn't create any line of site issue. So they had worked that out. So the resolution was prepared with the normal stipulations and slated for the board for action.
We have motion on this resolution?
I move the resolution to be approved as written.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Emma?
Yes.
Mr. Savili? Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Corgan?
Yes.
Mr. Bell.
Yes.
And the second resolution we have was the Julian Awanda Diaz Lopez, we all know as Priscilla jewelry application by Bellows that was denied by the board. That was a use variance bulk and site plans. Says, or denied. So the resolution was prepared as a resolution of denial and is submitted. Unless anyone has any questions or revisions for adoption.
Let me just ask one question. That resolution, does that show reasoning why it was denied?
Yes, and I submitted the draft, hopefully we had a chance to review it, but I have the the revision, these are the reasons to deny it is the board had discussed a number of reasons specifically during their deliberation vote, but there was a lot of reasons put on the record by both the board and the public. So I incorporated all those in there. Put in the usual legal language and planning language, punch it up. And also, as always, behind the scenes, what I always do with all my resolutions, the board is know is always run them by, by Jay and John and Andy Mishansky many times. So I do want to thank them on this one in particular in taking the second, I've got to make sure we had a tight resolution since it is a denial. So again, if any of you has any questions, any specific provisions in there or reasons, please let me know if not, if they can be voted on.
Okay. Have a motion as resolution?
And Mr. Chairman, I moved that the resolution be approved as written. And I'd also like to say this, it was an excellent write-up with all the points.
Yeah.
Very, very nice.
It was a team effort. Again, I always appreciate my fellow professionals weighing in. You know, the board's lucky to have a good group of professionals representing.
It's probably a good, it's a probably a good outline on if we're going to deny something, how to go about it the right way. It was, yeah, it's really good.
Thank you.
Yes, it's not just a no.
Was that a, was that a motion to, to approve? Okay. John, roll call, please.
Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Savili?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Emma?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Corgan? Mr. Bell?
Yes. And can we have a motion in a minutes of the last meeting?
Yeah, on the minutes, Joan, you know, I meant to, because I knew you were out when I was emailing you. If you would just change in the resolution, add to the resolution that during the, the application we're just discussing, the Lopez application facility, that it was discussed during the meeting that the beauty parlor ownership had changed after the July meeting. So just, I can work on the language with you. As you may recall, that was one of the issues. They're saying, oh, you know, we're going to, we're limiting the, the, the hair salon tenant to, you know, one chair and appointment only and blah, blah. And it came out that that wasn't the case and also came out that, well, that tenant wasn't there anymore. It's a new tenant with a whole different operation. So I just wanted to, because it is in the resolution that the ownership of the salon had changed after the July hearing. So so make sure it's in the minutes. The minutes by law just has to reasonably reflect what happened at the meeting. Ninety nine percent of the time, you know, I don't have any changes for Joan. That one I thought was a little important. Otherwise Joan's minutes are usually very good. I rely upon them a lot. Thank you. But otherwise, Mr. Chairman, I have no other comments or changes. Thank you.
So we had a, a motion in the second? Was your second? Second.
I did the second.
Oh.
This is for the resolution.
Oh, for, for the minutes.
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 The minutes.
Did I second it? I make a motion, we approve the minutes.
Is there a second? And you, you say, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that's it. Councilman, are you still on the phone? Do you have any comments at all? Okay, thank you. I'm glad you were able to join us tonight. Any other comments from the members here at all or?
What do we got coming up?
One, we have a bulk in November. Yeah.
John's saying we got one homeowner, so far it's it. The end of the year is either quiet or it's busy. So, so far it's quiet.
Unity Center.
There is the.
There was other rumors flying around that it was fast.
Oh, the dates, yeah.
I didn't, I must have missed those in the email. Joan, you submitted dates for next year?
Yeah, she has them here.
In the packets.
You know what, maybe I forgot to print it out. Um, we can act on that next month unless.
Any questions on the dates? Have people reviewed them all? Which would be good on those days, right? Yeah, we can always change them if, if there's a problem.
We have to, we, we usually normally we do is we, we set them now and Joan publishes them and then we, we re-adopt them at reorganization meeting, the first meeting in January because technically you're supposed to do it then. But, but if we, if we publish them now for next year, which Joan does, then if we need to adjourn something, next year the dates exist.
I have to publish them the first week in December.
Yeah. So if there's any, anyone has changes or they know they're going to be, you know, gone or something, I think Joan always makes sure she looks at the holidays and other, you know, meetings could change around the holidays, make sure the zoning board's not meeting the same day as the planning board or the council. So I'm assuming the dates are all good.
The opposite side of Berstner Road is Old Bridge. They would receive a notice. The residents within two hundred feet, even if they're in Old Bridge, they would receive a notice.
No, so when, when it, when it goes over the line into either another town and or another town and county, sometimes that happens, right? You're up against the county line. They still draw the two hundred feet. So whoever's within two hundred feet in Old Bridge, you got to go to the Old Bridge Tax Assessor and he'll, the Old Bridge Tax Assessor given the list for Old Bridge. The Sayerville will give them the Sayerville. They got to notice all those people. Plus, since it's in another town, they have to send a notice to the clerk of Old Bridge.
So it's not like the Old Bridge zoning officer or anything?
No, it just, it just addresses the clerk. Right, everyone within the two hundred foot circle and then the clerk of the town municipality gets a notice directly. Because it's affecting that municipality. Doesn't go to mayor council, doesn't go to the zoning officer, goes to the clerk of the, of the town, which here is Old Bridge. And again, it was against the county, notice would go to the county as well, but that's not the case. Those happen on a page.
Any other comments at all?
Yeah, actually, Jay was just whispering, what's the date of the next meeting? Remind everybody, twenty second.
All right, make a motion for adjournment?
Yeah, so it's not the day before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, no, good thing.
Until Tuesday the twenty second.